You might not like it, but I can hear.
Oh, sure I will.
I'll just start. She's not on either, so I don't know. I'll just take notes here.
All right, at six thirty-one, we'll call the Monday, May tenth, city council meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Maggie, that will take us to six A one. Is, if Barb's not on, do we want to?
No, I can, I can give you.
Okay.
An overview.
Okay, let's go, let's go with it then.
Um. So, Mayor and Council, uh, the Art Consortium of Carver County, um, they are a nonprofit. They are asking all cities in Carver County to consider, um, some participation ideas in celebration of, or during the month of June to celebrate, um, the Prince. Um, it's his fifth anniversary since he has passed. And so this is something that they're, um, wanting to recognize. And so they're coming to every Carver County city, um, to ask them to participate. Some of the ideas that they were proposing, uh, were kind of changing lights out at city buildings to purple or planting purple flower beds, um, sidewalk chalk art, purple balloons or banners or flags in appropriate areas, and then also marketing to local residents as well, um, seeing what, uh, what they can do in their neighborhoods as well. So there's, um, more detailed information in your packet. So I, uh, one suggestion that I think would be appropriate would, um, I think we could do the purple lights on some city buildings, um, and then we could also do some marketing on, on social media to, to see if residents want to participate as well. So with that, I'm just looking for some guidance as far as how the council would like to move forward with participating, uh, in the month of June, um, for the Purple Rain Celebration for Prince.
Any thoughts on, um, we want to participate? I like the idea of the lights.
Me too.
A lot of people fine with that, um, showing some support. It's not a huge financial burden. And then, yeah, maybe whatever we could do on social media to, to market for them, I think would be, would be awesome. Thoughts, ideas?
No, I think it's an idea. She really liked living in Chaney, I said.
Absolutely.
I ran into him several times when I lived in Chaney, I said.
Great, do you need a motion for that, Maggie, or can you just?
Um, we could do a motion, just to. In support of it by.
I'll look for a motion to support, uh, the Purple Rain Celebration for the month of June and putting purple lights up on our city, uh, buildings as appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us, Maggie, to six A two, uh, council seat vacancy.
All right, um, let me just get to this slide quick. All right, so at the Mayor and Council, at the April twelfth meeting, the city council accepted a resolution that accepted the resignation of, uh, Eric Boder from the city council, and that immediately declared a vacancy. Uh, so with that, um, resolution, there was a timeline that we approved. We would accept letters of interest until April thirtieth. Um, we received four, one, uh, letter, or one applicant did pull their letter of interest, so we do have three. Um, so those were included in your packet, and we will also be taking statements, um, this evening as well from each applicant. Um, so as you know, when we're filling the vacancy, um, because it is under two years, we are able to do an appointment. So with that, um, that would, the appointment this evening would fill the remainder of this term, which would go to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So with that, we will accept, um, we will go through each candidate, or each person that submitted a letter of interest, and then, um, we will do a vote. And, uh, there is a resolution in your packet that would then, um, approve that appointment. So, um, the first applicant that we have in the packet is Steve Albertson. So if Steve is in the audience with us, we would ask that you step up to podium. And, um, we're just asking you to do a statement of interest.
So, I'm, uh, been a mayor now for almost eight years. Been doing it in Colonia before that. I have my own small business here, do a lot of work with Mayor Lumber. My work area is all of Mayor, Waconia, surrounding areas. Still do some work for Hoppers. I'm just really interested in, in serving my community. There's much more I can tell you than that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, oh, and then next we have William Blinster.
Good evening. I want to keep this brief because obviously you, you read my little letter. I didn't tell you much about my professional history. I grew up doing conventions and trade shows and special events. So I've had a lot of project management and people management experience. I ran a small water restoration company and have been in and out of the building contracting bill, business for about twenty years as well, uh, depending on what's been happening. I've been living in Mayor since twenty twelve, um, and I have had one child born here. In fact, my wife was pregnant when, when we moved in. And the other thing that my convention and trade show experience was given, uh, has given me is my ability to do mediation or to listen to all sides of a story because I was assigned all the problem customers who were complainers. So I got to hear things from this side and things from this side and play mediator between the two. So I'd, I'd like to think that I can keep an open mind and balance what's the right thing to do between the, the two stories, so. That's it. If you have any questions?
Nope.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And then lastly, we have Peggy Wagner.
Hello, I have been a resident for almost twenty years. Hard to believe my house has almost paid off. Um, I live with my husband and my two kids. I work in Waconia for a manufacturing construction company. We build semi-custom cabinets. I supervise a team of fifteen people. I work in credit and collections. So I have a financial background, and then I have the complexity of collecting money and trying to pay the bills. So I think I have a pretty good grasp on the financial aspect of a business, um, while operating or running a department of fifteen. And, um, you know, kind of like he said, you know, you gotta hear all sides and mediate and come to a resolution that best serves both sides. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I thank you all for your interest, uh, in the vacancy of the city council seat. Like Maggie said, most of these are filled through an election, but because of the, uh, the, the term, uh, that's remaining, we are able to go through the appointment process, which we're doing. So at this time, we've heard all your statements, and to keep the process from getting skewed through the typical motion process of trying to make motions for one, and people not being able to make a motion, uh, uh, for maybe the candidate that they would prefer, we are going to go through, um, a voting. We, we have a tally sheet, so if everyone can vote for the candidate that they, we'll pass them down to me, we'll tally the votes and go that way. And if there's, in the case of a tie, per state statute, then the mayor will elect and break the tie. All right. So with that, we have Councilmember McNeely, one vote for Peggy Wagner. Councilmember Halt, one vote for Peggy Wagner. Councilmember Melander, one vote for Steve Albertson. And Mayor Dodge, one vote for Peggy Wagner. So with that, we have three votes for Peggy. And with that, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution five point ten point twenty-one point twenty, uh, appointing Peggy Wagner to fill the council seat from Eric Boder.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? So with that, thank you all candidates, I appreciate it, I appreciate the interest. Uh, Peggy, congratulations, and, um, I look forward to working with you. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Perfect, thank you, thank you all.
What'd you say? Yes, I will be in touch with you, yep.
Is it next, how we have election?
Um, two thousand, yes. So it'll be, yeah. Yep, I'll be in touch with you, um, you're welcome to stay for this meeting. Um, yeah, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, that's, that's not, like, you know, maybe to meet.
Okay.
All right, with that, let's move to six A three, the roundabout.
All right, Mayor and Council, in front of you this evening is the final, um, draft of the concept for the monument sign at the roundabout. So staff has been working on finalizing the concept and getting it to MINDOT for approval. At the past city council meeting, uh, staff did present two, uh, land monument, or sign options, and the council decided that they would like to stick with the monument sign as it would match the one at the south end of town. Um, the monument sign would be financed through the capital fund. We did budget for this, um, in the past, however, we did not purchase it, and so it has been, that money has gone into the capital fund, and so we are proposing that the monument sign portion will come out of there. Um, I did include the balance right now. The landscaping portion, we will pay for out of the beautification fund that we did budget for this year. So with that, there is the roundabout sign in your packet. That is what it will look like, and then the concept of where it will go. So staff is recommending approval of the monument sign in the amount of twenty-two-thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars to be paid for out of the four thirty-five capital project fund.
All right, with that, look for a motion to approve the roundabout monuments, uh, for twenty-one thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars.
I'll move that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Well, I see we got the purple cone flowers, I mean, we're right in line with the Purple Rain.
Right.
Love that coral.
I don't think.
Osters grass, too. Maggie, I, I've known other cities that have gotten grants for signs from the state. Can we look into that?
Um, we can look in, look into it for grants. Again, we're always looking for grants, and if you ever come across one, we're always welcome, I mean, we welcome that information so we can look at it as well. Are you specifically asking for a grant for this sign, or are you, or?
Yeah, I mean, you can always, you can always purchase and then apply for the grant.
No, no, you can't. You usually have to, um, you can't, generally the grants work where you cannot purchase something ahead of time and get reimbursed. You have to apply for the grant ahead of time and then get reimbursed. So that, that's just, I could be wrong, but that's generally how grants have worked at any time that I've applied for them.
Yeah, I agree, it's certainly worth checking into it and see if you can find some. And you said this was budgeted for previous years?
It was, it's just because of the, the timeline we've been working with, and it's just getting pushed off, it's.
Perfect.
On the quote, there's taxes involved, so it's a different total, but there's no taxes because we're.
Right, we would, so, they usually take that off once we submit a S T three form. Yep.
I just wanted to make sure we.
So I guess, um, my question would be then, we could approve this tonight, but the actual purchase of it, we would probably have to table because if we want to look into the grant, then, um, yeah, we would have to wait until that process, we go through that process.
Can we still approve it, and we'll have the motion in a second to approve it? So can we move forward on that? And before you purchase them, can you just check, I mean, do some quick checks, see if there's anything out there, and if there's not, then, then purchase it?
Sure, yep, if we, if we phrase it that way, yep. Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
I actually noticed one thing.
So on the quote, it shows the sign has, um, the Mayor logo on the front and the back. Is that something? That everyone would be interested in, or would it just be coming into town?
Say like, thanks for visiting or something?
No, it just says Mayor Rising Community on front and back.
I don't think we need it on the back.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't catch it on the back. I just caught it now when I was studying it again.
I thought I saw when it.
I just want to make sure that, because it would be a, the price would be reduced with a smaller sign, or a.
I think I would be fine with just coming in.
Yeah, I don't think we need it on the back unless it's like, thanks for visiting, you know, our community or something.
We have the welcome sign on the other end of town.
Right.
Coming in that side, so.
I would assume just.
I would just put it.
Just one side.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify before.
You want us to amend the motion then, Maggie, or withdraw this one, or what do you, or just?
If.
You won't exceed the twenty-two one thirty-six?
Yeah, you can say, removing the back, um, you can amend it to remove the, the second sign and then not to exceed.
Who made the motion?
I think Larry made the motion.
Do you want to amend your motion to only have it on the front, or do you not, would you rather not?
How goofy is that going to look? What's the dimension of the sign?
There'll be landscaping around it and stuff, I don't think it'll look that bad.
Right, so with the landscaping that's being proposed, there'd be taller bushes.
Right.
On the backside then?
On the backside.
Yep.
Like the grass, that grass gets real tall, that's pretty cool grass.
Yeah, there's grasses, I think there's, these are more than these shrubs that'll.
All right, I'll amend it to, um, only do the side facing north?
With the lettering?
And, uh, the reverse side blank for the monument sign?
The second, was that Halt or McNeely?
That's me.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right. Six three B, MINDOT Limited Use Permit.
All right, Mayor and Council, in front of you this evening is the Limited Use Permit with the State and Minnesota Department of Transportation. This would be to allow us to have a limited use permit for ten years. This would allow us to construct the monument sign and do landscaping within the roundabout. Um, so the limited use permit is in your packet and would be approved through Resolution five dash ten dash twenty dash twenty-one. Um, this was sent to the city by MINDOT, so it has been approved by MINDOT. But in order for us to move forward, we do need to sign this limited use permit. So staff is recommending approval of the permit between the City of Mayor and MINDOT by approving Resolution five dash ten dash twenty dash twenty-one.
All right, any questions on the Limited Use Permit?
So it's ten years, and that, is that just typical for limited use?
Yeah, it's, it's typical, um, so they just want the flexibility to be able to, like, if for whatever reason, worst case scenario, they had to do something there, they have the flexibility to, to, uh, be able to use the roundabout if they need to in the future. So it's, it's kind of like when the city issues a right-of-way permit for a fence, like, it would be at our expense if we wanted to replace it, if they had to do work there. So it, it's, it's a pretty standard contract or agreement.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution five point ten point twenty-one point twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, six B, one wastewater treatment facility with New Germany.
Um, so I will let Dave and Ryan jump into this. So, um, as you know, we have been looking into, uh, regionalization with New Germany. And so in the past, um, we've been, again, talking about the pros and cons of allowing New Germany to connect in, and the last time we talked about this was in January, and we had Ryan kind of outline, um, his findings as far as, um, as far as, uh, what it would mean for New Germany to connect in. And so tonight, we have an update on that report. There was additional findings as far as, um, cost and, um, kind of the overall project scope. So with that, we're going to do a PowerPoint presentation.
All right, uh, yeah, thanks Maggie. Um, you know, so this is something we've been, you know, on and off talking about, I think for over a year now. I don't even remember exactly when these discussions started, but, you know, New Germany's wastewater treatment facility is a pond system and it's over capacity. So they've been in the position where they've had a look at some options as to where they go from here. They can't expand their pond system, so, uh, they're looking at some different options as to how they kind of move on and continue to grow, uh, from a wastewater standpoint. So to look at this, um, a, ultimately Met Council stepped in and funded a study to take a look at if, uh, one of the options was to come to take wastewater flow from New Germany to Mayor, uh, how does that look from standpoint, what are the impacts on Mayor's wastewater facility, what are the costs and, and some of the impacts if that was looked at as an option? So, next slide, Maggie. So, the current conditions of the plant is, um, from a capacity standpoint, the city's still in good shape. Uh, from a, uh, flow standpoint, they're at forty percent of the capacity, so just kind of the physical flow that you can take through the plant, a lot of capacity left here. There's, uh, we're at thirty percent from a loading capacity, so the stuff that's in the wastewater that we're trying to take out, we still have capacity to do that. The one thing that's, uh, more urgent than the other systems at the plant right now is the bio-solids storage, the little solids that come out during the treatment process. We're at basically busting at the seams right now dealing with that. Uh, so Kyle has to just, uh, arrange for getting rid of those bio-solids more often than he'd like to, and, uh, that's something we're going to have to look at sooner or later, regardless of what happens, uh, with our discussions with New Germany. From a regional, uh, regionalization standpoint, if we were to take New Germany's flow into our plant, um, obviously we've got more flow coming in, it takes up some of that capacity. So our, uh, capacity goes from that forty percent from a flow standpoint to sixty-four percent of capacity, and, uh, the, uh, loading goes from thirty percent to thirty-six percent. So, um, when we're looking at kind of the planning of the plant, we do this in twenty-year increments, and the process, when we look to make improvements or expand the capacity of the plant, we start doing that when we reach eighty-five percent of capacity. So even by pulling, uh, New Germany's flow in, we're still under that threshold where, we're not looking at needing immediate improvements to take on that flow, uh, but obviously it pushes us closer to that eighty-five percent where we start some of those things in motion. From the, the design projections, uh, Mayor alone, we would look at that planning process in twenty thirty-five, when we're projecting our growth, our flow, um, we're anticipating that when we get to the year twenty thirty-five, we would start that planning process to be expanding our plant. If we were to bring New Germany on board, that extra flow kind of accelerates that process, and we would, uh, we're basically about ten years ahead of schedule from a, a planning standpoint, so in twenty twenty-five, we would, uh, be starting that planning for, uh, capacity expansion at the plant. So, the major expansion, uh, then would require, be required sooner if New Germany came on. Um, we've looked at the costs associated with that, and we're anticipating that the expansion that would need, be needed at the plant is a seven to nine point two million dollar job, um, to get that added capacity, again, about ten year, years ahead of schedule from, if we were on our own. So what we've looked at is, if New Germany was to come on, we treat them as basically a one connection. We'd take their flow, uh, but we would charge them a connection fee to hook into our system. And we've looked at the, Ryan Cota, who's, you know, done that, this report, has looked at it a couple of different ways. And so we've taken, uh, from a cost standpoint, we've estimated an eight point two million dollar plant expansion, and then operating a maintenance cost of three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to understand, uh, the dollars that would need to be covered if we're going to have the users of the system pay for it. What we've done is equated New Germany's flow, trying to make it equivalent to Mayor's flow from the standpoint of, we have so many gallons coming in, we know we have this many connections, that's this many gallons per connection. We've used that same math then and applied it to New Germany to have an equivalent number of connections that we would account for if we were to tie them in. Assuming that we would, uh, charge sixty-five hundred dollars per connection, and that would be, if, if Mayor, if you built a new house in Mayor to connect to the sewer system, it's seventy, it's sixty-five hundred dollar connection fee, that's what we, we're proposing or assuming in this exercise. If you take the number of users in New Germany and you times it by sixty-five hundred dollars, um, that's what we would, we're proposing that their connection fee would be. So, when you do that math, their equivalent connections is four hundred eighty-two connections that we would be looking to charge them for, uh, at the sixty-five hundred dollars, that's three point one million dollars would be their connection fee, just to tie into the system. In addition to that, Mayor's going to continue to grow, so we're going to have some new connections, so, doing that math and looking at our growth, that's one point, just about one point seven million dollars in connection fees, um, that are assumed in this exercise. So the result is three point three million dollars, uh, that would need to be financed for a project, um, to make that eight point two million dollar expansion, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to run the plant, um, you'd still be financing a three point three million dollar project. When you take that, um, with the O N M cost, monthly cost of the plant is forty-six thousand dollars. So assuming a total of one thousand three hundred forty connections, the average monthly bill to cover that cost then is thirty-four dollars a month approximately. Now, full disclosure, we're not your financial advisor. So what we're trying to do is just run some, kind of some simple math to kind of just get a feel for what are the costs we're, we're dealing with here, how is it compared to some of our costs right now, try to understand, is there a benefit to the existing users and future users in Mayor if this, uh, connection was to happen? So, uh, if you look at your existing base charge at twenty dollars and sixty-five cents plus, uh, uh, seven dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand gallons, uh, kind of, again, using those same values, um, in running the math, it, uh, a current sewer bill is estimated a hundred and four dollars per month. And if you estimate that sixty-five percent of the bill is for the wastewater plant, you know, you run that math, it's about sixty-seven dollars a month that, uh, user is paying for the wastewater plant right now. If New Germany's to connect, um, they would again be charged as a single user, so we're, we're not sending a thousand bills to New Germany. So we're, we're not sending a thousand bills to New Germany residents. They get one bill for the flow that they're sending to us. So there is a, a benefit from an economy of scale and some efficiencies that are gained by adding that flow in there. Uh, the drawback is that obviously we accelerate our planning, that things that we're, we're looking at having to start and think about in twenty thirty-five, you move that up to a few years down the road here. So the benefit for the economy of scale is that um, you know, the treatment's only gonna become more expensive uh when we're looking at the, some of the limits that we're doing, that are looking at the plant with our new, new permit that we're uh, we're getting for phosphorus. If you take the eight point two million dollar project, uh, you spread it across the users, you get a cost of six thousand one hundred twenty dollars per connection. So for the same project scaled down for just Mare, it's estimated that that project would cost six point four million dollars. So an eight point two million dollars if we're expanding, considering New Germany, six point four million dollar project if we're by ourselves, that eventually we're gonna have to do. Uh, you take it, spread that across, our users alone, it's seventy-four hundred dollars per connection.
It's more expensive per connection if we didn't include New Germany.
Correct. You know, so, so you're, you're still gonna have some expansion costs in the future. You're gonna have less users, it, it's gonna be a less expensive project, but you're also gonna have less users to spread that cost across. Now again, this is, we're just, there are some assumptions in here, we're just running some simple math, but it appears that there is the potential, again with that economy of scale, that there could be a benefit for the users of Mare. So where we're at right now, again, not being your financial advisors, but it, it looks like there, there could be a benefit here. That the next steps would be, one is, we've, uh, Ryan's had some conversations as recently as today, I believe, with the engineer from New Germany. They're looking at uh several different options. Uh, they're not sure that the, the Mare connection is, makes a lot of sense for them right now or not. With that said, they are still interested in having a meeting just to go through this report, understand some of the assumptions that were made, talk through that a little bit, just to make sure that they're considering everything uh that they have uh a, as an option to them. And so the question for the council tonight, as it's kind of been all along this, as we've gathered more information, is, is this a conversation you want to continue to have? I think, in my opinion, where we're at, um, we've gone through all this work. Uh, we've been talking about this for a while, it probably makes sense to sit down with them and at least have the conversation to kind of close the loop on everything that's been considered and, and understand uh where this goes from here. I think we've indicated in the past, from Met Council's standpoint, they, they like the idea of trying to combine some of these plants. That doesn't mean that it's right for you, uh, kind of what their position on this will be or whether or not they try to uh step in and, and help facilitate something, I have no idea. But um, I guess where we're at tonight is just looking for some direction as to whether or not you'd like to set up that uh meeting with New Germany. I believe what they were looking at would be staff and the mayors. You know, just uh, again, have a conversation, uh, if that makes sense to you. Have I left anything out?
I think you covered everything.
Well, when you say planning, sorry, did you?
Go ahead.
When you say planning, start planning in twenty twenty-five instead of twenty thirty-five. How quickly does the new plant have to be built? You know, like, so it, everything's moved up ten years, how long does a planning of this take?
It's, facility planning generally takes one to two years. That we'd have to do a report and then submit it to M P C A for review. And from that point, then we go into design and uh certain construction. So it's generally about a three to four to five year uh process.
Okay, so we'd start planning that in twenty twenty-five to build in, by twenty thirty would be done.
And so if you look at that, remember, you know, kind of that eighty-five percent capacity where you start that process with that exactly in mind, that from kind of the time you start that, it's gonna take a while before you have that expansion up and running. So you, you have to start before it's absolutely needed.
Right. Okay, I just was curious, just for financial purposes, you know, looking at where we're at on all our bonds and for a tax impact for, you know, if we did it later and not included New Germany, would we be, would it not be as expensive for the residents by adding another bond to the?
Um, it, again, I, I think we would have to work with the financial advisor. I think um, we, they did our um utility rate study, so we would just kind of re-look at that and again, making assumptions on our growth and New Germany's growth and kind of the cost of this project. We would first kind of see what the rates would maybe be um with a new rate or an updated rate study, but then we would also put it into our um debt, debt schedule as well. But keeping in mind that these, that, this debt payment does not uh get put on the tax roll generally. It's, it's by utility user fees.
Good reminder.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it, it really comes down to, in a large part, what your connection fee is. So the, the philosophy of the city, ever since I've been here, is that growth pays for itself. So that when you're bringing on the growth, you have expansion of the system and costs associated with that, that the new growth that you're bringing in the community is paying for that expansion. It's not going on the existing users. So, you know, that ultimately, that's the benefit of more growth from a, again, back to that economy of scale. The more new connections you have coming in, the more revenue you're generating for some of these improvements. What, um, when I first became engineer, just uh, somebody maybe have kind of heard us talk about this before, but Mare was in an interesting spot compared to other communities that um, you started expanding your infrastructure back in the early two thousands because you had growth coming, right? You had developable property, had developers at your door, and you needed to expand just to start to grow. You know, the cold water, Hidden Creek, Fieldstone eventually came. So you built a new water tower, you built the uh wastewater treatment facility, um, a water plant. So you had all these costs to accommodate the growth that was coming into the city. In two thousand eight, then you can remember is, we, we had a problem with housing. So the city had taken on debt, made these improvements for the growth that was coming, and then the growth stopped. And it, it created some issues from now, you had some uh debt that still needed to be paid, but you didn't have the connection fees coming in. Where I'm going with all this is there were other communities that were on the verge of growing and at two, and having to expand their system, and two thousand eight came and they went, whoa, whew, thank goodness we didn't spend all this money because now we don't have any connections, right? Well, now you're on the, the flip side of that now, where you're, you've expanded all of your facilities. Again, if, if you do, if you go it alone, you got, you know, till twenty thirty-five before you have to look at expanding your plant. So the good thing from the city of Mare's standpoint, you're in a good position where we can continue to grow, assault some of the, these large expans, expansion costs. We just have to now take care of, of, of the things we have. We have bio solids, we have pumps that are getting old, you know, yeah, so your capital improvement uh plan tries to account for those things. But we're in good shape from that standpoint. But now going forward, when we look at this kind of next round of expansion, that's what we'll have to start doing, is working with your financial advisor to make sure that those connection fees are set appropriately with the idea that you want the growth to pay for your expansion. You're not, you, you, to the extent you can control it, not put that back on the rest of the users.
And I think a lot of the projects are hitting their um, that twenty twenty-five year mark too. So those, a lot of those bonds are gradually falling off as well.
Yeah.
Dave, we still, we still levy for that shortfall.
Yes, I take from the sewer.
The sewer, the sewer we do, we're able to, yep.
Yep.
So you're saying like, we have a, our flow is fine, but our solids, we have an issue?
No, uh, well, the, the, yes, the bio solids. Right now, you, you need to add uh bio solid storage at the facility.
So is that included in that eight point two million?
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that, but again, that will be something that is gonna have to uh be accelerated compared to. I think that's really the, the main thing that, that is gonna happen sooner than later.
Well, that was the thirteen thousand three hundred twenty that we go to Lester Prairie that we paid. How often do we do that?
Twenty years. So we pay Lester Prairie and then we pay a company of all the two.
So our, our connection fee with New Germany would be three point one million?
As we've, as we've proposed it based on our assumptions.
And then they would pay us a yearly fee of three hundred fifty thousand?
Uh, they would, they would pay, they would pay your, they would pay for their flow. So just like you do at your home, they would get a bill for the flow that they send every month.
Okay, but that'd be just one, one bill?
Yep.
And so that would be like, the residents here, we get a three percent increase every year. So that would get a three percent increase or whatever.
Yep.
We would, it would be a, up, an agreement that we would have to figure out again. I, I know we've talked about, you know, uh, it, it's something that we would have to really narrow down with them.
Yeah, the details would have to get worked out as, you know, because if you're New Germany, you're probably says, okay, well, we're fine with this, but now we've lost control of, of this too. And they, they probably want some safeguards in there to understand what their exposure is as far as how fast these rates could come, go up. They'd probably want some guarantee that you're not gonna just, every time you get a new expense that uh, the New Germany bill goes up, but nobody else's does, things like that. That would all have, have to be worked out. And again, you know, uh, I think if, if we sit down with New Germany, they're gonna take exception to some of the assumptions we've made and the way we've calculated uh that three point one million dollars. I think Ryan could tell you that their initial impression is that doesn't sound right to us at all. So if, if we were serious about this, it, you know, it would have to be hammered out at some point. Again, it, it sounds like maybe they're, they're looking at some different options and coming to Mare at this point anyway. But again, it, it, it seems like it would be appropriate to have the meeting, just if nothing else, kind of close the, close the loop on the discussions we've been having.
The question more is, are we okay with moving up uh the planning of it by ten years? If, if we agree with having New Germany? If we don't like that idea, then you just say that this isn't feasible for us, right? I mean, I mean, where we're at today, like if we're okay with possibly moving up expansion by ten years.
Yep, we're looking just for that next step, should we do that then?
Yeah.
And I've said all along, unless it makes sense for Mare, I have no interest in doing this at all. Number's gotta come out.
Right.
At this point, I have no problem going to New Germany now and presenting them with this stuff. And see, they may write, write down and say, no, forget it, we're not, we don't even want to. And remind me, Dave, who, who funded the, the report?
Met Council.
Met Council, okay.
Yeah.
So Mare's not in this.
Remember, we were kind of, it floundered for a little while because everybody was kind of, New Germany was asking us for some information and we had to pull, to even start helping answer some questions. We, we had put some work into it. And um, Met Council basically stepped in to get it off of square one.
Just a quick understanding, the only effect it's gonna have on Mare is the initial connection fee for new homes? It will be less if we would join with New Germany, or existing water bills will be less for current residents?
Water bills.
They will be.
The, the connection fee would be the same for a new home in Mare as it would be for what we're charging New Germany.
We're hoping with the intent of spreading it out now with four hundred and eighty-two additional.
And then, and Ryan is here as my fact checker, so I can let him correct anything I've misstated now.
We don't know the significance.
We don't yet, until we work with our financial advisor.
We'd have to do like a different rate study. I mean, there's a lot more, but I think the question is, is we can go down and, you know, if they say, yeah, we would like to move forward, then there's another conversation that's probably gonna have a lot more details to determine if, I don't want it to cost our residents more money.
Many more conversations.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, I'm okay with moving forward and saying that if this is an option that they're interested in, that we can continue moving forward.
Yeah, I think from ten thousand feet, it looks like this could be good for us.
And that's what we were trying to do, was to do some simple math to see, is, to your point, is there, does, is there a potential for a benefit to the, the, the mayor residents?
Yeah.
It looks like maybe there could be.
Yeah.
Especially since we will have to expand anyway, you know.
Eventually, yeah.
Eventually that this could, yes, it speeds it up, but your lower construction costs because you're ten years earlier and you're sharing it with more homes.
Right, but I mean, we would need a significant decrease, right?
And we have three point one million, then that goes towards the project from those one home fees. Although without New Germany, we're at about one point four million less than predicted if it was just Mare, but.
Yeah, I would need way more information, but if I was to say, yes, let's do it, but.
At a high level, this looks like it's something worthwhile, running it, uh, to speak with New Germany, let them know where we're at. And um, I, I think we're all four of us and soon to be five. I can't imagine anyone would vote for this if it didn't benefit our residents.
Right.
There's just no point in it, so, but it appears we're getting there and I think every step will, will have a better idea.
Right.
Any other questions for the engineers?
Not right now.
Not for those guys.
Anything else, I, did I step in it?
No, no, I mean, the big benefit is it's economy of scale of capacity.
Right.
Out to more people. I, I think like, just looking at like Met Council and the Twin Cities metro area, those are all regional plants. And the benefit is, is all the users pay lower bills because of so many users.
So my other question, cause I just, like, do you guys just, is there like just a pipe that then is now installed? Or like, how, I don't even know, like, how do you even get it here?
Lift station and.
Yeah, that would be on their end, that they would have to build a main lift station. And they, you, they would use their existing pond system as an equalization. So it'd be the same flow rate, uh, max flow rate that they could send each day. And we would basically just have a metering station and wastewater. But that, they would be responsible for those improvements.
And then it just comes through something that would use right aways all the way down to ours.
Basically, we'd just run it right down Conroy Road thirty.
What?
Our wastewater gets here the same way from there.
Yeah, that's just me, like, you have to start where I flush the toilet, like, that's how you're explaining to me. And then what happens?
And your kids flushed a T-shirt and Kyle's gotta go clean out the impeller.
Too much, they have ponds and then they can hold them in ponds to make sure the flows are.
But, and again, that, and that would be part of the details, again, that have to be worked out as to what, what we ultimately will accept from them. If limits change, how does that get factored in?
Right.
You know, it, so there, long ways from being able to understand all the details, but that's where it's at right now.
Yeah, for me, I'm fine meeting with um New Germany. Maggie and I certainly can be available to do that.
Okay.
Do you need a motion or are you good with just the conversation?
I think we're fine.
I think we're fine with the conversation.
Yeah, I think so too, and everyone's okay with that?
Yep.
Yep. Well then, yeah, we'll work with Maggie then to facilitate getting that meeting set up.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the summary too, that was great.
Just come with more details if we get to the final, like how it all like.
Grass tags.
That'll get tedious.
How, how long will we have that, that we're levying right now for the, the pass project when the housing market busted?
Say that again?
That, we're levying right now to pay off some of the improvements that Dave talked about.
Right.
Like, it's like a seventy-home plan that we levy for? New development is like on page ones eighty-two of the financial last in March that was presented to us to pay off uh that debt. Do you know when that is paid off?
Um.
I don't know what bond it was.
I would have to uh maybe review that. I, I don't know offhand.
Okay.
So I would have to get that information too after the meeting. Maybe get, get some clarification.
All right.
All right, with that then, we'll move to six C one, radio purchase for the new tanker.
All right, Mayor and Council, um, we are looking for it to, an approval to purchase a Motorola remote mount radio for the new fire tanker. This was brought to the previous city council meeting. remote mount radio for the new fire tanker. Um, this was brought to the previous city council meeting. Um, at that time, council tabled this item to get more information and research the possibility of applying for a DNR grant. Um, we did do the research on the grant. Um, staff determined that moving forward with a grant application would not be beneficial at this time because the grant would not be received if we did receive it until December, uh, I mean, September twenty twenty-one. Um, because the city will be receiving the new tanker in June. Uh, but we are being proactive in looking at other current needs of the fire department to determine if that application submit all would, would make sense for, for those needs. So with that, um, it would be paid out of the fire department capital fund for three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents. Um, so the fire chief and city administrator are recommending the purchase of the radio in that amount to be paid out of that fund.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
Nope. Um, I guess the only thing I'll add is, uh, as far as that DNR grant, um, and there was another, I think it was Excel.
Uh, some at point.
Um, we are submitting for some other stuff on those grants, um, but just for this, the timing of this doesn't work out.
Right. Okay, good. Now will this set us up? Is this the same radio now we have in all the other trucks?
Yes.
Will be set up with the state of the, this was state of the, okay. Was this budgeted for, for twenty twenty-one specifically?
I mean, we had budget in there for the pagers and stuff like that, radios and stuff like that was over that, you know, being we received ten pagers from Camden's, we're not using all that money that was kinda budgeted there, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions for chief? All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of a new radio, uh, radio for the new tanker, uh, for three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars.
I'll move that.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
I was the one to ask them, look into the grant, so I also looked into it. And so this grant is every year from April or June, we can apply. And I'm a big believer and we should apply for every single grant we can. It's a one-page grant. So I hope in the future that, like, if we know that things are coming up, we can supply every year.
We do apply for it every year. Pretty much, uh, it's, they award it to, you'll get it like every other year, every third year is usually what you end up getting it, no matter what, but yeah, we do submit for it every year.
Yeah, we've done a good job of staying up on that and, and we've taken advantage quite, quite often with those grants too.
Yeah, we got grants for, I think, the fire gear, some other stuff too.
Regulators, breathers, whatever.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries four zero. All right, city council reports. Larry, anything to report on?
Not this week.
Nikki?
Nope.
Chad?
Nope, park board tomorrow night.
And I've only had one. I had a public works meeting, but it was talking about the wastewater treatment plan, so Dave's already summarized all that, so. And I have nothing else. Uh, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries four zero. We are adjourned. All right, with that, Maggie, I think we'll jump, let's jump right into the work session. Are you, are you ready or do you need a few minutes?
Uh, no, I'm okay. Okay. Um, so ma-
I have a workshop, uh, to order for Monday, May tenth.
All right, um, so the first item to discuss is the current fire station property at four hundred Ash Avenue. Um, right now, uh, staff is looking for direction on future goals, ideas for the property, um, the, the current fire station that's at four hundred Ash Avenue North. Um, so included in your packet are some options, um, that we can consider. Um, we are able to explore the option of leasing the building or selling the building. Um, if there's any other ideas, um, please let me know and I can do the research as well. I did include the process of both in, of the leasing and the selling option in your packet, just for general discussion. Um, but right now, the main focus tonight would be having that discussion and providing some guidance to staff as to how to move forward.
All right. Any thoughts on that? Jenny?
So my first question would be, we don't feel that there's any need for it for city functions.
Um, if you, the, yeah, that would be the discussion. If there's anything you can think of.
Like would cities, like, would public works wanna utilize that space at any point would be my first question. Second question is, we would have to rezone it, correct?
Um, depending on, depending on what you use it for, yes. You, if you did sell it, it would have to be rezoned for that use, um, if it's.
Can you be like specific and say, you know, just, cause it is the starting into a neighborhood? And what types of businesses could be zoned? I don't know if you have.
I think right now that area is guy, or the long-term plan guides it. If we were to sell it as similar to the other properties, which, which would be commercial. Um, just to be consistent with kinda the other businesses around there, I would say it would probably go to commercial or be recommended from staff to go to commercial. Okay.
Do you have any idea of the value?
I do not know the value right now.
I, I see your point of view. I mean, if we need it, I mean, it might be worth, but I'm gonna have to weigh that out and see who is, what kinda interest there is. I would put a business in there anytime before we take it.
I know there's interest.
If that was a change, if that was it, I'd add on to our building if we need for public work. I mean, I don't, I wanna save it just for public work. If we can get a business on, on Main Street.
Right. So like, my question is, let's say, uh, auto mechanic. It, it sold to an auto mechanic. Can we have things in the ordinance where they can't have, you know, broken down cars, like sitting out on the cement? Or, you know, like, I'm not trying to, like, how do you make sure that it's still?
Yeah, I would.
Cause it's the beginning of a neighborhood, it's like real visible from every aspect.
Right. Yeah, that site is would be limited for storage anyways because there's not a lot of outside, um, storage space. But I know, um, again, I could, I can talk with the city planner, but I know there are certain, if you do zone certain, um, properties within a certain, let's say, commercial, there are conditional uses within certain districts. And if that's a, if that use is based on conditions, yes, you would, you can go through the process to put a conditional use permit on that property that would then place conditions that that business has to meet on that site. Which one could be, you cannot have outside storage?
I mean, is anybody, I mean, is that, is that like a thing, that's just what I, my biggest concern of it. I, I would love to sell it and, you know.
Best bet is to a private owner for storage.
Well, you, yeah, but you can't really be picky on what they're gonna, you know, but I wanna make sure we're.
We gotta look at all options.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, what, first, what's the value of it? Is the building worth anything? What would it cost for the city to tear down the building itself, just the property too? Um, or, I mean, there's so many different things to look at. I think if it were me, I think we should start with the EDA and see what their thoughts might be and if they have some ideas, um, for it.
And I think one option that you can consider if you wanna develop that site is an RFP, which would, um, people would, I believe, put in proposals for that site and, um, and then the, the city would have more, uh, more control over what it becomes.
I mean, could we get an estimated value of it? I mean, can, can we call someone or can you look at?
Yeah, I think we could get like a current, um, I could see even on Carver County, what it's currently assessed at, um, so we can start there.
Yeah, I think we look at all options and weigh them out and.
And if public works was, was interested in it, I make sure that they raise their hand. Like, I mean, I want, I just wanna hear all options, you know?
So, well, from a.
Like, if you were going to use.
I don't want it, I don't want it to seem like, ooh, ooh, we're interested, you know? Um, but ideally, from a public work standpoint, it's more practical and cost-effective just to have all your equipment, any tools and everything at one location versus driving. Granted, it's not far away, but it's still a hassle going back and forth from building to building. Currently, we have our old public works building and that, um, we have enough storage with that building for all of our equipment, plus our new public works building. If that were to go away, or the park board, I know has talked about building structure. This one out here, the old one. Um, then we would need somewhere to go with our storage equipment. Right now, we kinda swap, uh, seasonal equipment, so we got snowplows in there right now. And we, you know, then we swap again for, uh, winter, then we pull snowplows, put lawnmowers and everything else over there. Um, yeah, if we were to lose that, then we would need somewhere else to go with it and then the new, the old fire station would be practical for it, so.
Would you completely wanna move in there and get rid of the one in the industrial park as well?
So the old fire station, I know when we talked about the old fire station, we, we purchased the new building over on Schumcor. And the main, major downfall for it is there's no outside storage. And I have an outside storage, I mean, you go to our shop right now and we, we got piles of rock out there, we got piles of sand out there, we got riprap. I mean, we have everything we need.
Salt?
Our salt storage, absolutely. So we have everything we need on hand for projects, emergencies, that sort of thing. So that was the big downfall. Um, and then if we.
Trucks here and have your salt over there.
Yeah, and vice versa. Let's say we move our piles to the wastewater plant and then we gotta have two guys here, drive a loader out there, we gotta drive a truck out there and it's just more of a hassle.
You got room for expansion out there?
We have plenty of room for expansion over at our.
So if we sold the fire station, use the money for expansion of the.
Ideally, yes, but we'll see if the fire.
I mean, that'd be ideal if we're eventually potentially gonna get rid of the storage up here.
We have gotten cost to expand our current public works building and it's, it's doable.
What was the ballpark on that, the expansion?
We got a price last year from Ram Buildings to do everything for three hundred and ninety thousand.
Oh, well.
To double the size of it.
The old station's gotta be worth that.
County valued the old station at three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Perfect.
That's what the county valued it at. So would we get that?
A little higher than that.
It would be higher than that, I think, county value.
Yeah, I believe the city would have to figure out what they would wanna.
Do you wanna just start getting some value, some idea on that? Do you wanna start working with?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Be.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I wanted to come tonight just to get some direction. If there was something you were completely set on, if you were, we wanna sell it, let's go that route. We wanna lease it, let's go that route. If you wanna explore multiple options, I will explore them all and I can bring them back.
Explore all options. For me, I don't know if I wanna get into leasing, to be honest, but, um, selling it, absolutely. I'd love to get another business on Main Street.
I don't, I mean, with power works just for it as a storage of swapping out cold and summer, I think we're better off doing it all out at the public works area than, even if we got rid of this for, cause of the park board. So.
This just isn't ideal for public works trucks to go all out.
No.
Right, yeah, you have to consider too the location, um, just noise as well in the, in the night, if we're plowing and we're backing up and stuff. I could, I'm just throwing that out there too. It's just one thing we would have to consider is.
So how would an RFP work? You just put it out and people say, I wanna buy it and I wanna,
Yes.
Storage.
Yeah, so you would, yep, you put in an RFP. I haven't done one before, but I would, I would bring that option back to you with more detail. Um, so I think you would essentially say, this is what we're looking for, um, let uh, private, um, investors or developers submit their RFP and then you would.
Is it kinda like when you sell, like, we've sold some of our, or is that like equipment? Didn't we do it where that wasn't RFP? That was just closed bids?
Um.
It's similar to what we did with some of that equipment, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it, it would give you more control as to what happens with the site, instead of just selling it and letting them do kind of what they want. It would allow you to kinda view several ideas.
If we sold the fire station, does the fire department get any of that money back at all either?
I don't know. That would be probably a council decision.
We wanna do it, yeah, absolutely.
Right. Yeah, so that, yeah, that would be part of the discussion.
I'm in favor of keeping the building at least for a while till we determine like what, what public works needs, what are the fire department needs are gonna be. Um, until we get everything finalized, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
We are still growing.
Right. I know, um, there has been discussion at the public works level for a couple of years now as far as expansion. We just haven't determined a, um, we've started budgeting for and, and levying to save up for that building, um, so it is in the works. We just don't have an exact timeframe yet when that expansion would happen. Um, and I know that that would, that expansion would essentially meet all the needs of the public works department into the future. Um, I, I'm confident that with this new fire station, there's been a lot of discussion as far as how long it will meet the needs of this department. And since we did, the council did approve the two extra bays, I'm confident that their needs will be met. Um, but again, it'll be.
I think it's just gonna take that long anyways before we start getting information.
It'll, yeah.
I have no interest in putting this on the market next month.
No.
It would be well after they're moved out in November if we even look.
For sure.
Yeah, it'll take.
Like next year before we even.
I think that might solve some of that, um, where, you know, they'll get, they'll get moved in, they'll be set there, we'll know they are and, and.
Keep it as an interim while the new public works is being built and if that one's torn down to store equipment in the.
Right, we, we do actually, from a, well, from our, uh, standpoint, we do hopefully hope on utilizing the building even this winter. Um, and probably just kinda trying it out from that, once the fire department moves out and they're all done with it and everything. Cause then we'd probably keep actually the bigger equipment over there or our trucks over there or vice versa. Kinda have a, easier to take the plows on and off, that sort of thing, so.
I mean, I think we should be interested, let's talk to the plan, our city planner, just about what uses or how would that look if we were to move it to commercial? And then I would say, what is kind of, uh, the market value, not necessarily the county, that's a couple of years behind. That, that value. I know the, I don't know about commercial real estate right now, so, um.
Get someone to come in and take a look.
Yeah, just get some ideas, so we at least know what we're, what we have options for. And then this winter, public, public works uses it, sees how, what they think of it and then next year we start, you know, having discussions on what to do with it and then.
Okay, so, um, just to summarize, do you want me to not do any leasing research? Is that kind of a?
No leasing.
I don't see, I don't care to lease it.
Okay.
I mean, at this point, I mean, if, but, you know, if the right offer came in, you know, I don't know what I don't know.
Right. Okay. I'll just keep it in, that's kind of like a side thing, but I'll do more research on the marketing it and the value and what, what potential uses are.
All right, is that good then for that, Maggie?
Yep.
All right, let's move to the pond maintenance policy. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, um, so this, this did come to council in February. We've been at the staff level and at the public works committee level, we've been really hammering out how this policy is gonna work as far as, um, a timeline, as far as budgeting, what's realistic as, um, as far as with the limited staff that we have, what can we, what can we do each? as far as with the limited staff that we have, what can we, what can we do each year? And so we've been meeting and, and making some changes as we go. And so the major changes that I, that you will see tonight relate to monitoring and inspection. And at first, we were trying to kind of more so summarize the 2020 mayor's stormwater pond assessment document and create a really detailed list of which ponds would be served or maintained when. What we did now is we, we referenced that document, and we have some flexibility. We're just saying that we'll, staff will prioritize and phase the maintenance of the entire system based on the data. Just with talking with public works and the engineer, we're confident that we could even do the primary, more intensive maintenance within the next couple of years. That would include cleaning out the, or inspecting the inlets and outlets and cleaning those out and making sure all obstructions are removed. We would also have public works, I, I believe this, this part is already being done, where we just go out and do a check on every single pond in the spring season, or kind of before the growth happens. And then the, I think the big question too is pond sedimentation. A lot of our ponds with the development process, we're hitting twenty to twenty-five years. It's a natural occurring process that things flow into the pond, the sediment accumulates, and it, it will eventually accumulate to the point that something will need to be done. Most likely dredging. So the, oh, I apologize, I didn't put it in there, but we talked about it. So how we would, what, what, what we would do is we would start probably in the next couple of years, testing the ponds for sediment levels. And then we would start determining based on what we find when dredging, the dredging schedule will happen. So that.
Big piece, since that's.
That's a big piece, yeah.
Expensive to start dredging, so we need to get a good handle on.
Right.
Which ones have to be done now.
Right.
So we can start planning for that.
Right, and I think a big part of, and Kyle can speak to it too, going out and looking at the, all the inlets and outlets will give us a good idea of, or at least a basic understanding as far as where sediment levels are as well, just, just eyeing it. But I think that's kind of the next step as well, is figuring out where those sediment levels are, and then doing a dredging schedule, and then figuring out the financial schedule for that part. Trying to think what other, I know a big part of this, big part of the discussion will be educating residents. Again, this is going to be a proactive, but also education process where there's responsibility on both ends. Because a lot of these ponds are, come up to the backyards of people's properties, and when people, so, long story short, we're just educating people on how we can prolong these ponds through just best practices. And that includes not dumping leaves, keeping debris out of it, keeping garbage out as much as possible. So that'll be a big, big part of the process as well, is, is starting to get this document out to residents. Showing them what we're doing, but then what also they can do, because I know there's been complaints over the years about kind of growth and smell, and again, what can we do, what can they do to prevent that? Lastly, I know as part of this, it was, we, these are common questions that we get. I think one thing that we're going to have to do is when we do start doing intensive maintenance, we do need to contact residents that do have docks or structures in there, and we need to work with them to educate them on why they should not be in there and work with them on getting them removed. Just because it can really affect the integrity of the pond and how it functions. So with that, that's, that's kind of my summary of this document. I'd like to get it back to council for final approval, and then we can start kind of the education process. Whether it's in the newsletter, on social media. The document will be accessible, like, if, if residents want to come and get a copy, we can do it that way too, but I'm open for any.
I'm good with the plan. I mean, I think you put a lot of work into it. I do, I would like to see a education plan, you know, on what we think we want to do. I mean, we could put something on on social media, but it's, really, it's people who live on them are the ones who are really, truly the ones who are going to care the most about it. Not that everyone shouldn't be educated, but, you know, do we want to hit these groups and, and what kind of education are we going to, that's a big piece to this, and I want to make sure we capture that.
Yeah, and.
Like a little more of a detail on what we think we can do for an education.
Right, and there's also, yeah, we can do open houses, just kind of sit down, have a Q and A session.
There's a big misconception. There's a lot of people that think that it's a lake they're living on, and, and don't fully understand what the intent of these ponds are.
Right.
From what I've heard, realtors were telling them that, as they were selling the houses, so the educate, the education's going to go a long way.
Right. Yeah, and I know with that, I've been trying to put, I know the, I've really stressed that Carver County water, water, sorry, water management, that they can put out some education materials as well, or create some as well countywide, and I've been pushing that on social media too, because I.
That's great.
I don't think we're the only city that's dealing with this, so.
No, but otherwise, I'm, I'm good with the policy.
I think we should look at targeting the homes that are on, on there. I don't know if we can, you know, Chad said that there's mailer options that are pretty inexpensive that we could, you know.
With that small of a group, though, you're almost better off.
Just mailing it yourself.
Yep.
That's where I think it needs to be more of a direct, like, to these people specifically, and a good plan more than just a social media post, or.
Right.
Somewhere they, they can get an actual letter or some.
Yeah.
Or like, say, an open house, or it was Larry who mentioned, you know, grouping it and meeting in a park and letting, you know, these groups come to a park and get some of the information, or things like that, but.
Yeah, I, I would say, I would say to keep it open to the whole community too, because this, these ponds feed stormwater from all. Over, so.
So that's where I think it's good to, I mean, but I think a lot of them, I think we really do have to focus in on the group too.
Well, I mean, in the parts where it talks about, you know, maintaining around that, don't, don't put grass clippings in there. So there could be residents that are actually following these rules to try to help with some of that algae, like fertilizer. It says, you fertilize your yard, it rains, it goes into the pond, and now you're just fertilizing the algae growth.
Right.
So by directing it to some of those homeowners, then everybody can see that, because the fertilizer from my house isn't going to affect those ponds, because I don't live on a pond necessarily.
Right.
I mean, it does go through the stormwater and goes to the, to the river. To, right.
You're putting all the fertilizer in the river.
What?
That affects every resident, but on things like putting a dock in a pond, I don't, I don't live on a pond, I don't need to hear, I don't, but that's where we got to get specific to the people who live around them.
I agree, I think you do both, but I think we do a little bit more of a stronger focus on the things that people have come to us, like about fountains and the smell and some tips to help.
Right, I agree.
So in, in this paperwork, our pond maintenance, that we have our, we have our assessment then, I mean, we have, we have our plan that we've, we've already addressed, like, all the priority fives? The eleven that are rated five of the forty-five?
So we haven't. What, what this updated document does is allows, based on a staff level discussion, we will be addressing those this year, we're confident we can. But this document, just to have the council approve it, allows staff the flexibility to reference the document, that information in that stormwater plan that was provided by the engineer. It gives us the flexibility to determine which ones need to be prioritized.
Well, I can tell you, there's eleven ponds that were rated number five.
Yes.
They're the worst. So in most of those, like vegetation, sediments at the inlet and outlet, so does that mean you can, you can take a backhoe in there and dig those out there, or for?
That'd be the idea, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to start with inlets and outlets, is it's more accessible. The other piece from an education standpoint is we have some places, though we don't know how the heck we're going to get in there, because there's sheds in the way and fences and trees and that, so that's part of the, the exercise we went through, was to try to identify some of the challenges to even get in there for maintenance, and being able to identify some of those challenges in.
So we have the right of way.
Property owners to say, hey.
We have the right of way in easements.
Got an issue.
Now, after twenty years and twenty-five years, like Dave said, things have shown up in there, fences, and now we have two or three owners later who have no idea of that even happened, so it's that education part. So we're trying to get this in place, so then we can reference back to that also.
Yeah, and, and if you recall, or for, for the couple of you who are here when we started the discussion too, is right now, there's nobody making us do this, right? So it's part of the city's infrastructure, I mean, the stormwater system's just as important as, as some of the other infrastructure we own and maintain. The ponds, they, they just have kind of gone unattended for, you know, twenty, you know, since they were built. And, and so that's, to a certain extent, we're behind, or I, I'd say we were behind from a maintenance standpoint, but from the standpoint of anybody telling us we have to do it, we're trying to get organized and be proactive.
So then our goal is to try and get to those eleven this year yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, public works, we comb through the pond assessment that Bolton and Mink did last spring or summer. And I got the same list, we got eleven ponds, all, all these inlets and outlets are flowing, they're not backing up, causing damage, that sort of thing. But yeah, we've already done one of them this year already. We've gone in, rented a mini backhoe, gone in, mucked out everything, loaded it up, hauled it to the compo site, contained it there on site, and then, yeah, move on to the next one. So it's kind of one of those things where we address that one, because that one was the worst of them, so that was the first one on the list, but otherwise, this summer, we'll be, we'll be knocking.
Correct? We have to test it all.
So we'll go on to the next one, next major one, and then go on, and by the end of, by fall, we should have them all pretty much wrapped up, so.
Because right now, we don't have a pond policy in place, correct? No, so we don't have anywhere to reference for the residents to go to say, here's our policy that we have in place for ponds, when they're going in and starting to work on these critical ponds.
Now, did you get any grief when you would, you did that?
Communication, education, that's, that's key, but no, the homeowners are awesome. We got really good residents here and there, so they understood and everything, and we went in, we made a mess. Because that slime and muck that we pull out of those ponds is not nice to work with by any means, so, but we went in, we restored it, we reseeded it, and that was just last week where we put black dirt in and reseeded everything, so, but no, it, there's a lot of, a lot of coordinating. It takes more time to coordinate and educate and plan, you know, come up with a plan and attack, because we do lay plywood down, so we, less maintenance and all that other stuff on restoring and everything, so we get our equipment in. But that's key, is you can't get big, big equipment in there. Ideally, it'd be great to pack the dump truck in there and throw everything in the back of the dump truck, but no, we dig it out with the mini, pile it up, haul it out with our tool kit, because it's lighter, come over, dump it in our little dump truck, because our tool kit can't lift that high, but it, it's a process, but we get it done, so. Trying to coin a, we don't want to just kind of do one of the, we kind of want to get everything lined up and kind of hit, because it's not cheap to rent a machine either to do it. So if we rent the machine for a week, it's, you know, a thousand bucks for the whole week versus two hundred, three hundred bucks for one day. So trying to just get everything coordinated, and if we could rent one for a month, that would be even better yet, but we don't want to rent one for a month, and all of a sudden, it rains half the month, so there's a lot of, we could just buy one, but. But yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of coordinating and educating, but otherwise, people understand, people know they're there, and people know the work needs to get done, so.
A lot of these ponds, I think, you know, what Kyle's found, what I've found going out too, is people are looking and, and hoping for some maintenance in some of these areas too. So I think, I, I wouldn't be surprised or hope that they'd be cooperative, because I think people recognize the need in some of these areas. Again, there's going to be some, I think, that are a little bit more challenging, depending on what's in the way to, to access them, but I think most of the conversations I've had anyway, people are, are looking forward to some of this sort of maintenance.
All right, anything more I need, Maggie? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Any other questions on the pond maintenance policy? All right, snow plowing and ice control policy.
All right, so lastly, in front of you is the snow plowing and ice control policy. So this is something we've been looking at updating for quite some time. As you know, last year, we were going to try and take snow plowing in-house, but due to some staff turnover, we, we did contract it out for one more year, but we will be taking it back on this year. And so with that, we wanted to update our policy proactively to reflect what, what our goals are when we take that back on. So the policy is in your packet, or was provided to you ahead of time for review. In there, the main, the main, or the main changes were to provide more in-depth information on priorities. We will be drafting a map with Bolton and Mink that highlights the different priority routes, so then we can put it on our website, and people can read themselves our policy and, and visualize when we do have a snow event, where we will be first, second, third. And then we provide more in-depth information about property damage protocols, responsibilities of homeowners, and then parking and towing procedures. One thing with that, one area that we need to talk to the council about is the current snow ordinance. It currently states that vehicles can be parked overnight during the months, the major months of where snow falls, that's November through April. Vehicles have to be moved if there's one inch snowfall. What we are recommending to council is changing that ordinance to have no parking within a certain timeframe throughout those months, whether it's two AM to six AM, because we need to be able to be efficient and get out there and, and plow, and we do, we have been running into problems with vehicles being on the street, but then the ability to tag them, because there's always this, you know, is it one inch, is it not one inch, is somebody going to argue if we do tow them, if it's, and we have actually had that scenario that we did tow somebody, and there was kind of a, well, how do you know it was one inch? And so we're just trying to simplify things, just, just straight hours, no, there's no battle between the, the, how much snow has fallen. So that's, staff is recommending that council consider changing the ordinance to that. As far as the parking schedule, we will be more proactive in educating residents within the first month, but then after that, we will call the sheriff's department in to identify and tag vehicles that are breaking the code. We would then contact the towing company to tow those vehicles and then get them off, so we can then get out plowing and, and remove snow efficiently. So with that, I'm.
And I know we discussed this a couple of years ago, it was recommended from, I think the sheriff's department, or town cop is even recommending it, but I know at that time, I was opposed. or town cop was even recommending it, but I know at that time, I was opposed to it. I didn't see a need for it, because we hadn't had problems, but I think we're getting more and more problems and more and more cars. So we did talk about this at Public Works, and what's weighed me to wanna do this now is really the weekend stuff, because we can't do anything with a car without the sheriff's department coming and tagging them and then towing them. So if we, on a weekend, and we don't have a town cop here, it's gonna be tough to get someone out here, because it's snowing, so they're probably at accidents and other things, that we will be the last for them to come around. So I think it's the way to go now, is put a time and just no parking for those months is, is what I, that's what I would prefer. Like, two AM to six, two to six, two to seven. I don't know if I'd go much earlier than two AM, just because there's businesses in town that are open, you know, till one o'clock.
So, so my question to that is, it'd be for winter, like, whatever, November first, April first, it says. So would we, how, how do we enforce that when it's not snowing? Do we, when our officer isn't operating during those hours, to tag and tow vehicles that are breaking it? Because it's not, it's not snowing, because it's not gonna snow every night.
So we're hoping the area cop, the area cop will come around when it's not snowing, give people some warning, let them know, hey, you can't park, you can't park here.
So that was, that would be the direction.
Try to eliminate it, so when it does snow, they're not there. What would be the, what's our investment on new signs?
Oh, let me see, I thought I... I must not have put that in there. I know I had it in a, in one of your memos, I think, a year ago. What did we say, there's a sign for every entrance, I think it was fifteen signs. I don't remember the rate either. I think it was fifteen.
You can get that for us.
Yeah. I'll, I'll include it if you, when, when I bring it back to the regular council meeting, but, um, yeah. It would be, yeah, changing all the signs at every entrance to the residential, residential streets, so.
Other thoughts, do we wanna do it? No parking at all, or what are, what are some other thoughts from other council members?
I don't wanna do it.
I, I do.
No, I mean, like other cities, that they just plow around them, they pile them in. If they, if we declared a snow emergency, they tag them. They either tow them or they find them.
Yeah, so the problem with that, again, is we are liable, like, okay, so if a car is even snowed in and they move, that street, that, that extra snow becomes slippery, it becomes compacted. If somebody gets into an accident because of that, that's a liability on our end. So we're trying to do our best to clean everything, be proactive, educate residents. The one problem I ran into even this year was we did tow somebody, and there was a long conversation about how we could even prove that it was one inch. And I feel like that if we start towing people more with this current ordinance, I know we will have more people arguing with us about that, and maybe even taking this to small claims court. Because, but we don't, we don't go out and measure, even if we measure at the Public Works building and it says one inch, somebody could argue, how do you know it was one inch at my street? And so it's, and I'm just going off based on this experience that I had this year. And again, we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to educate residents, we wanna be efficient. It just makes the whole process less efficient and safe.
I think that's a big piece of it, when we only have two, we only have two Public Works employees, and we need to get them through and, and get it done.
So does no parking during snow at all?
It would be for certain hours.
Parking ever.
It's pretty much no overnight parking. You can't, there's no, you, yeah, you just, you can't park overnight at all between the, between November first and April first, no street parking.
So what's the downside of that? What if we did do it, what's the negative, what's the negative of it?
Well, we do utilize street parking year round at, at our, at my house. And I think that there are other people that utilize it. Now, we do follow the, and move when it snows, can you put any snow, like, just a trace of snow? And then there's really no, if it snows, you can't park at all, like, any snow, or do, why is it one inch?
I don't think the depth really matters, it's a matter of plows getting through.
No, I know, but I'm saying for the, this whole one inch, like, someone arguing it, if you just say if there was any trace of snow, I don't know if people, cities do that. Any snowfall, no parking.
There's also one thing to keep in mind, is we do pre-treatment sometimes too. So the ability to get out and, and Kyle can maybe go into that.
I'm, I'm just saying, it is, I've, I have not personally lived, but I do have family members that live in, in cities that you can't park on the streets in the winter, and it is challenging more so if you have things going on and to have every, everything in the driveway. And I'm just, I know that was one, another resident was concerned about that, because she has overnight nursing, and they don't have enough room in their driveway to get their homeowner's cars out, and then the nurses have to park on the street, so, because they can't leave. You know, that was, that was one of the residents that I do know came to one of the meetings. So I just, I...
We gotta, we gotta see what the benefit, I mean, we gotta make sure the benefits.
Some of the newer neighborhoods too, that have sidewalks, and they only have thirty feet between the garage, you can't put two cars between there, and then you're covering the sidewalk, and they rely on the street parking if they have two teenagers, have two cars, they've got their cars, their garage is full of crap, because they've just moved in, it's an inconvenience. So, to try and help our customers, they park on the street. Now, most of them do move during the winter, they make accommodations, because they don't wanna get plowed in and have to shovel that to try and get their car out, but, you know, they'll park anywhere, but.
I think if you have this, you're still gonna run into cars stuck. I agree, it makes it easier, because then there's no controversy as, you're not supposed to park here during these months, we towed your car, we gave you a warning, you didn't move it, we're towing your car, there, we're not gonna go to...
And I get what, I, I agree, and I'd, maybe we could look at some if it's snowing at all, but you're right, they pre-treat. I think people, if it's not snowing and the roads are clear, they're gonna park there at two AM. We're not gonna go tow them. We're not gonna tow it if it's not snowing. People are gonna do it, so, like you were saying, if you're following the rules and doing it, it probably won't affect you or won't change. I mean, we're complaint-based, so I can't imagine if there's no snow, we're not gonna go around and start plowing unless there's complaint. Who would complain about it? You, you know what I mean? So I think when people know when it does snow, I don't know, it just seems to be cleaner and easier, but.
What do you want, Kyle?
I want everybody to be happy, but I know that's, that's tough to do. But from a public works standpoint, so we do salt, not necessarily pre-treat, pre-treating is when you go up before a storm and you coat the roads and everything else, but we do, we do salt the roads, say we get a half inch, say we get a glaze, say we get, you know, if anything, if we know chemical's gonna work and we have under an inch, we'll lay a chemical versus plowing. But if we know it's, it's gonna be, or it is thirty below, and we get an inch, we're gonna plow it off, because it's better to mechanically remove the snow versus try to treat it. So, as far as even just salting and having cars in the road, it's kind of a headache, just because if you're going through with this big piece of equipment, have the plow, everything on, and you're salting, there's a car parked right there, your spreader is on your side, your, the driver's side, so then you gotta stop, you gotta make sure you don't blast the car, because you don't wanna blast the car. You gotta go around the car, sometimes there's a car parked here, a car parked there, you can't fit the big truck through, so you gotta back all the way up, which is just some of the occurrences that we've had. Also, as far as ticketing and towing, we're the ones that see the car, gotta call dispatch, hey, there's a car, this address, here it is. They'll come out, take it that one, you know, I can tell them to scope the city, you know, see if there's any other ones. Sometimes they don't see all of them, come to another one, gotta stop, call the dispatch again, have them come out, take it, all, you know, tag them, all that stuff. So it's just kind of a...
I think we're still gonna get that.
More of a process for us with our current policy. There is things we could do, we could, I talked to other cities, other Public Works directors, and they'll just call dispatch and say, hey, we're gonna go out, plow at one AM, be there at midnight, go around, find any cars parked in the roads, get them to move.
And then that costs us community ser, that, that's our bank of extra hours that we would get charged, correct? Because it would be after, unless we're...
Yeah, if they're providing a city service, yes, they would, they would bill us for that. But we do have...
If we did something from November first, April first, no parking between two and six AM during any snow or ice event?
The other... ...in a snow or ice event, you know what I mean? It could just be flurries and, I know, but...
There's been some instances too, where there's a blizzard, we call dispatch to come and take it and tow it, they're like, yeah, you're right, you know, we ain't gonna get there until morning. And also when blowing snow, cars parked in the road, after a blowing snow, you know, that's, sometimes that's just as work, just as worse as if it were a snowstorm, and we gotta go out and replow.
I think no matter what, we're still gonna have problems. Even if you say no parking, people are gonna park on the street, and if you're saying that, well, can have the snow parking, but we're not gonna send the county car through every night to start ticketing and warnings on non-snow events to start educating the, then I don't, you know, then...
What do we gain?
Yeah.
Maybe let's go, let's leave it as is for one year, you guys haven't done it yet. Do it for a season, and then let's revisit it.
No Main Street's the worst. Ash Avenue is dreadful.
It, uh...
Well, it's just hard, we can't clear curb to curb, and even if we go around...
So when you say Main Street, why, why can't we have certain roads where there's no parking overnight on some of the main roads? Like, why does it have to be every road?
I think Main Street has that area, doesn't it?
I think Main Street's unique, because it's a state highway, so I think they have their own policies, and we have our own policies. But I know the county, they...
You know, because like you have your snow emergency routes where, you know, the city, I, we don't, we're not big enough to do a snow emergency, but then, nobody, you can't park on that street at all when that's called. And I know that they still have issues and are still pulling, towing cars. I mean, I think no matter if we have a sign that says no parking at all, if we're not, at least the first year, going out every night and saying you can't park there, then people are gonna be like, oh, well, I didn't get a ticket for a month, or a warning for a month, I parked out there for the month of November.
So that's just the way things are, I mean, you got lucky. I mean, I can speed down Highway seven and never get a ticket, and on the tenth day, I get one and...
Right, I, I, I'm just throwing out different...
I think with like any, like, with this policy, there's obviously gonna be inconvenience, like, there's pros and cons on both sides, I, I understand that. So I think what, what our goal is from an operation standpoint is to make, you know, our job more efficient and, and be more proactive, again, educate, but then also get out there and make sure we're doing the opera.
I guess I'm going...
And I, I know that this can impact residents, I, I understand that. But it, it's kinda like, sometimes you have to make those tough decisions, and I'm not saying you have to make one or the other.
Well, I'm not saying I'm against it. What I'm struggling with is, here's another ordinance change we're gonna do. The likelihood of us actually following through and doing it when it's non-snow event is hard. Had, had, did we give anybody sidewalk tickets this year? I mean, they're supposed to shovel their sidewalks every, I mean, I'm just trying to say, like, again, it's another ordinance change or something changing, but it's gonna take a lot of effort to make it actually actionable. And that's by having, hiring the county car to come through, starting November first, and start giving warnings to say we're serious about this.
Would otter even parking help? Sides of the street specifically? You know, they're all on one side instead of bobbing and weaving in between, like they do in Minneapolis, you know, say, you know, this is, you can park on the outside of the street today. And then at least that whole side's clear for them to get through, they're not doing the, I don't know.
I, I'm just playing devil's advocate on this, and trying to speak for residents that...
I agree, I agree with you.
Let's let them go through a season like the mayor suggested and see how it rolls.
You wanna roll with it?
Leave it the way it is.
I think that's one option.
And I think we need to...
We just might not come to an agreement on this, and, and you can bring it to council with your recommendation, and if you have them, it'll pass or it won't pass. I mean, it may just come to that too, if we can't, we, we may just not come to an agreement. But I, I'm fine, you know, I, I don't know if it's ideal, but I'm fine waiting one more year for you guys to actually do it, really document some of these problems where some of the, the pain points are, and...
And, and doing the calling ahead to see if that works, to say, hey, we're gonna be plowing tonight at blah, blah, blah.
It's just nice to go curb to curb, and not have to go around, and then what do you do? Are you supposed to come back then, a day later, or not, or then we gotta monitor every car?
Is there a way we can do, like, you know, through the water bills or something like a courtesy text message that there is, you know, no parking?
There's a snow event tonight, no parking.
Right, there's a snow event, no parking. Is there a massive text system?
We don't have a texting or a blasted...
Then what do we do when we miss one?
I know.
Then it's our fault.
I know.
Some people I take accountability.
Well, right, I agree with you.
Some people, if you don't have room for eight cars, you're gonna have to figure it out.
Right, I mean, yes.
Add a pad on the side, clean your garage out. We all have three, I mean, some of that, it, it just, it is what it is. I mean, we can't make every twenty-two-hundred people happy either. I mean, we do what's best for the community.
Right.
From a safety standpoint, and from our employee's standpoint, and, but I'm fine waiting a year. I, I don't know if that's ideal for Public Works, but I certainly don't have a problem with that, and then really documenting some of those pinch points.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, not saying this is a, a personal thing, I just know that when we've had previous discussions about that, and I just struggle with, we're gonna put this in place, but how are we gonna action on it? And what does that look like, and will we do it? Because, you know, I, I went on lots of walks this winter, and there was lots of sidewalks that I, you know, it was like this much or just the walking path, the people that just kept walking over, and I don't know if they ever, they never shoveled their sidewalk. But it's a staffing reason too, like, we don't have time to be going around and... What? Did you? Okay, I didn't know that, I mean, so, well, I, I don't usually, I'm not like that. I don't call everything, only when somebody like says something about something will I, but I can, because I'm out there. Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it's plowed for them or if it was walking, you know. I'm just saying, that's what we struggle with, just because of the, how small our staff is, is how do you...
This is something that would, you know, from, when I started in America, it was, it was fine. I mean, we barely had to be, few and far between, we had twelve of you. But now we've got newer developments and new people coming in, rotation, it seems to, every year, you know, all this was a problem, but now it's just, you know, so it's kind of...
You need to come up to them if you're gonna talk. So I'm fine either, I'm fine waiting, or if, if staff meets and, and you guys really think the recommendation is to do this, and it comes to council, we'll just have to...
Yeah, vote and...
Vote on, wait out at that, at that time.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
So you guys talk it through and see, you know, what the benefits are, what outweighs what, and, and your recommendation if it comes to, comes to council.
Yeah, there will be some policy that will come to you, whether it includes this or not.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, so, okay.
Perfect. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
No.
We are adjourned.